All right, perfect. All right, so I call the meeting's order at seven oh six-ish. First word of business is the flunt allegiance.
We're to the limits of playing of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands one nation. And we got in the missile with the liberty of just.
Perk. Well, come here. I was actually trying to skip like you guys like.
Here.
Erica.
Here.
Brian. Here, and present. Um.
And I'm here.
David. He was Jeff is David. Yes, okay, David is present. Sorry, I didn't see that David. The big D out there. Okay, got it. Right, um, has a meeting been properly notified and?
Yes, it has. And as a reminder, it's being recorded.
All right, like to welcome visitors. Uh, this time do you have any public comment? Okay. With that, we'll move on to the highlight on youth. Um, girls golf. Our head coach, Mr. Kimberly, and some.
Thank you very much for having us here, following us through the past four years. Um, so with me today, we have Sally Magnus, Ashley Schmidt, Phil Holmes, and Janice Olson. Uh, they're four of our six varsity girls. The other two are still nine-year-olds. Yes, so they're not even with us. And then also, uh, this is Richie. More physical coaches, and also is coaching his son tonight, so. Uh, good to be with us, but. Um, obviously, uh, you know, it's kind of the big show and tell piece right here, so. Um, just a couple, couple of quick things about our season. I took. Second powers, second regions, second sectionals, second state, just happened to be second to the stage exact team over and over. So, uh, first guess pretty darn good. Um, but again, you know, just, this is a culmination of the season. And then I'll come back and show that I think about and can just share some stats of the growth over. These ladies' entire careers, so four years. Um, but again, just. We want to get opportunity to share some highlights this year, um, specifically our trip down the state as well as, um, things that they've learned and enjoyed over the past.
I'm Sally. I've been on varsity all four years, which is pretty exciting. Um, decided to talk about all four years just because of trying out to experience all of it. Um, my freshman year, uh, we weren't very good, but we won regional's actually. Um, and Mr. Kimberly was always kind of yelling at me that I had to, you know, stay positive because I was going to be a leader on the team on four years. And that we just kind of had to keep building off of the progress that would be year after year. Um, so in sophomore year, we kind of just did that. We had a couple of girls coming in after some graduates, um, and made down state. They didn't really know what to expect. Um, but ended up getting third, which was pretty awesome. And then my junior year, we just kind of kept building off of that. And we ended up getting fourth, which we were all pretty upset about because we put in all of this work and it just didn't really pay off for us. Um, and then with COVID, the courses switched, so we ended up kind of being out of our comfort zone a little bit. And then this year, it was kind of different because we had all five seniors, so we just really tried to focus on one shot at a time and being able to build off of the momentum that we had built like our whole career. Um, and we got, like Kimbo said, second at regionals, sectionals, and state, which is pretty exciting. Um, I met old as a sophomore, junior, and senior as an individual, but I think winning as a team, getting this thing was way better than as the individual, so thank you.
Hi, I'm Janessa. I actually started out, my first year of playing was actually when I was a freshman. I'd never touched clubs before then. And I was actually really bad at the beginning of everything. And so my freshman year, I actually only played at four JV events because we have such a big team. And I was kind of like iffy with it. I didn't really expect much. I had to do a lot of highs and lows of like hitting the ball. And sometimes that ball could go really far. It could go 10 feet. I'd have to walk 10 feet to my hit my next shot. And honestly, I learned a lot from the ball because it just kind of showed me feeling focused on the positives and to not think about the things that you messed up on. And instead, focus on trying to fix what you did wrong and trying to improve up your score and your shot and just improve in everything that you do. And then honestly, that stage showed a lot for me because I remember on the second eighteen that we did, at first on the back nine, which was our first time that we played that day. I actually shot a fifty-four, which was really bad to me, but we were also playing in really bad conditions. And then I came back around on the front nine, now just forty-six, was my best nine hole score around the entire year. And the fact that I did that at state meant a lot to me and showed how much I can actually improve throughout my entire high school career.
Hi, I'm Gil. This is my second year on varsity. I'm just going to talk about my improvement from last year to this year. Last year, my goal was to shoot always double bogey golf, which was a fifty-four. And this year, the goal was just regular bogey golf, which was a forty-five, and I was usually able to achieve that or a little under. But, um, I was able to set a lot of personal records this year. I shot eighty-six out of eighteen hole deep. And just to put into perspective from last year at state, I shot a one seventy on twenty-seven holes. And this year, I shot a one eighty-three on thirty-six holes. So I've improved a lot since then.
Hi, uh, I'm Ashley. Um, this is actually my first year on varsity, but I wanted to highlight on our team chemistry. Because I feel that was a big part of our success this year. Um, we had twelve seniors throughout freshman year that had never even touched a golf club. And obviously, they threw hard work and dedication. We were able to go to state through years, but. We were also able to create each other and pick each other up when we needed it to. Um, since there were so many of us. The competition increased. It allowed us to challenge each other more. Um, and I feel that it was worth the big hard work success. Going down to state this year was a great experience for all of us, and I think it was just a cherry on top of ending our senior season with all those seniors.
Um, maybe just two things, I guess. One would be, um, these guys behind us are, there, there's one more example of how, how outstanding the fall season was in the girls' athletics at our school. Um, I think that a lot of people have started to recognize that, but between volleyball and some individual success across country and then these girls completing second at state. Um, the fall season was outstanding for these ladies. So, second thing would be that the leadership of our program runs really deep. We have outstanding leaders on the varsity team. Um, but like I think Ashlyn just mentioned, only half of our seniors are on the varsity team. The other ones play JV. And in a lot of sports, it's very common for seniors, playing four years and you're not in varsity, sometimes that's seen as a detriment, um, or as a corporate price that it's. With being a very early fall sport, sometimes those new freshmen that you get coming in, you're looking for leaders to show them that Central's a good place to be, a safe place to be at the high school. Um, having girls that have put in four years to a program that they're not even playing varsity on shows that they love the program and that they're there for the right reasons. And we have seven, seven seniors that aren't here tonight too, that were an excellent part of our program. And it's, it's kind of a tradition that we started years past, and I think it's something that we'd like to continue, is having big numbers and just having a lot of, a lot of really good leaders that kind of are a new start of program. Thanks for letting me be here.
My first stat's actually recording. Um, so again, just to highlight it, these ladies, um, this is my fifth year coaching, uh, but they're, uh, in their four years, um, their best nine hole score. Improved by forty-two strokes. Uh, you know, it's just a nine holes. Uh, their best eighteen hole score improved by eighty-one strokes. Uh, it was a four oh eight to three twenty-seven, three twenty-seven we shot at regionals this year too. So picking at the right time as well. Um. Numbers wise, they had my first year, uh, they did thirteen girls off the golf. Uh, this year they're thirty-four. Um, to say there was a, a challenge is an understatement. Um, but at the same time, like they've all said. Now I'm gonna pick up a club before freshman year for the most part, and I think they've been all kind of really got into it. And, uh, I just, I really don't, um, you know, everything in the process, but freshman, because I didn't know they, uh, uh, the right, you know, push and right motivation. Uh, so we, you know, we did some creative things. Um, you know, we only had three coaches, uh, three paid coaches on staff. We recruited, uh, Mr. Sanders as a support coach. Um, I didn't know if he would be able to show up every day, but God, I think he's there like every day. I think he loved it.
Remembering home.
Yeah, exactly. Um, and, uh, that was super helpful. Uh, we also, um. Not sort of varsity girls, but, uh, girls that went high on varsity, we had a little creative, we gave them the day off every, every Monday off of the week. Um, which seemed to be good. Actually, I didn't hear any complaints, but I heard, I heard it was actually good that they could have a part-time job that one day. They could, uh, get schoolwork done. They, you know, use socialization if they, they want to run their school. Um, that was just a way for us to help mitigate. Um, you know, the girls on the course, help us focus more on, uh, making goals with the girls that were there. Um, the number one that we do, we do exit surveys every year, the number one that we always hear is. And, uh, that ratio is going the opposite way, uh, for that. And it is, it's hard to make, um, you know, obviously make, make it out of groups. A lot of group look that way, but you go around individually, uh, to try to help tweak little things here and there and, uh, make it all that way. So it's, it's, you know. Having, having a big number, and this is, you know, this was from the start when social will be right away. You sat down and said, uh, we, we just grow. It's our number score, our, we're increasing internal competition, our talent's going to grow. Um, that's all we're going to do, program. That's exactly what. And that's, that's what happened. Um, I, I'm just, yeah, I'm super proud of these girls. Um, you know, that's, that's, oh, we know where we're losing a lot. You know, last year, oh, we wanted to, to be a dip rather than a slide. And, uh, yeah, have high aspirations. Yeah, we've been down to state three years around and have a lot of confidence in this, so, uh, we'll be active. Uh, so, again, uh, just thank you very much for letting us come share. Uh, appreciate the time, so, and appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Did I hear, did I connect?
Yes, definitely.
So did I hear that you guys golf better in the rainy day than you did the nicer day?
Uh, we, we did, yeah.
Why is that?
That's a great question. Why is that? We first, the first day down to state, some of this year.
Yeah.
We played. I sound, I mean, first day I stayed, it was, it was.
It was soggy.
It was gross. It was two-hour rain, like in the middle of the round, so everyone got cold. We thought, we're not having to call it, we're just gonna do that hole's home. They, of course, drained, they're stepping in water all over the place. It was sloppy. Uh, and we, and we couldn't have played much better that first day. I don't know.
That's good. And then my second, my follow-up is, are you all four seniors?
Yes.
Do you know where you're going to school yet? And are you going to golf at, in any colleges?
I mean, I'm going to the cross, but I don't really have, I'm not going to golf. I'll golf for fun, but I'm going to the cross.
I don't know where I'm going.
No, I'm thinking maybe Oak Claire, but I'm not really sure yet. I'm going to UMD.
Any other questions? Yeah, um, so first of all, your, your athletic success speaks for itself. How amazing, and I've got a question about the girls, but, um. I'm equally impressed by how articulate you are, like the words you chose, didn't have anything scripted. You obviously were well-prepared, just like you are on the course. Um, but then, I mean, I was really impressed by your wisdom. Um, how you reflected, um, your leadership, and then how articulate. I mean, I, I know I couldn't have done that at seventeen or eighteen years old. Um, so congratulations on that.
Hey, we're all super excited.
You did a great job. I'm just sitting here thinking, wow, yeah, this is an interview. You'd be hired, uh, despite, you know, again, your word choice, you did great. But, um, yeah, so you've talked over and over about growth, 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 you know, can, and this is to any of you. You know, what do you attribute that success and that growth to if you had to pick two or three things or, or whatever, you know, because it does, it just doesn't happen, right? By getting year older, you talked about competition, but I mean, obviously you must practice intentionally and there's some things maybe you're coached on that you implemented. Maybe speak to that a little bit.
I'd say like the first two years, it was definitely the coaching. Um, me and Kimbo did not give answers.
Listen, this.
It was always on my butt about having to.
I was there.
I know. Yeah. And then like after my first two years, I was like, great, so then we all just kind of put it together and decided to, you know, be more obvious. It's definitely because of the coaches.
My, my total, mental piece, yeah. Next, right, most important shots, the next one, type of thing.
I mean, I know that for me, a lot of it came from Richie, talking about what to do on the range. I used to learn at his drills over the summer. And also, it helped a lot that like this last summer, I spent every weekend with my dad and my grandma going out to every single golf course around us and playing eighteen holes on them. So that kind of helped a lot. So just like improving the game on the course shows a lot and helps improve throughout the years. And that's what helped a lot for me.
It meant a lot to your dad, too. He told me that at the beginning.
Um, one thing that helped was definitely going out to the driver range or getting lessons with some of the other golf coaches around there. And one thing that really helped me was getting fitted from your clubs because I got a new driver and I could did that really well.
I would say the first two years was mostly just taking coaches' advice, trying to learn how to actually swing a golf club. But once you kind of hit that down, golf is also a very mentally challenging game, so being able to. Pick each other up and keep a good mental mindset is really fun as well.
I sort of have a question, but Sally knows, I said already told her, I was watching online, trying to watch everything online for the final round and stepped out of the middle school volleyball game so I could get service outside of the school. Um, so I could check the updates on the score and I, I, like, okay, up three, last two on the hole, they're on the eighteenth, okay. Like this was looking good. So I was coming in, giving updates to everybody in the stand, so. Super exciting. It was great to like try to watch it remotely. I wish it was like a little bit better remotely. It was golf hard and they're covering the wrong green. And next thing I was trying to do the live stream, like it's not them.
They're trying to cover you.
Yeah, yeah, they just, they missed out the exciting part though. Um, and then you talked about teamwork though. I really liked, uh, I saw some bucket hats and some things like that, just kind of that bonding. Uh, so I really like that stuff too. And, uh, um, I coached some of the youth athletics and just the fact that the girls have somebody to look up to, uh, that did something at state. Uh, because I think this is the first.
First hardware CC.
Hardware.
Hardware at state.
And the fusion. Yeah, but it's the first all SEC, right?
SEC, um, email team.
It's big, to give them something to look up to, so. Work.
We got compliments on those bucket hats.
I just thought, you know, it's bonding, it's good, it's important.
Well, again, congratulations.
Oh, yeah. These girls have been a team back at Annapolis State, either in the top three of the state the last three years offside. Probably was the first of all, they're technically. Silver lady.
Silver lady. Silver lady going home.
Silver lady, wow. I take her home.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we have the twenty twenty-three Europe trip.
Hey. I'm curious, I'm just a little bit of, so, you know, most of the guys, but I am hundred thirty. I teach at a high school and, um, a little bit of backstory with this, as a matter of fact. Um, a couple of years ago, very much, very much pre-COVID, uh, my husband and I have looked at, um, following Mary Lucking's footsteps of bringing a group to Europe. Um, for this school here, this, I mean, she'd been doing it for years and years and years, and she retired, and a little bit of time went by and, um, not only my husband and I, but a couple of teachers and I talked about that in the center. Great, we're an academic, we know that there's band trips and things, Oregon, Chicago, and some different things, but, um, it's kind of a broad trip, kind of an amazing experience. And as a teacher, you had students who had been, you know, gone and, and experienced some of these things. It was incredible, the stories they came back with and just those life experiences and things that I had. So, um, so we had looked at some things pre-COVID, had worked with a travel company who, um, works with schools called YF Tours. Um, had a, um, kind of a blueprint of what we were going to do for, and what we thought was reasonable cost, um, to Greece and Italy. And there's a lot of history and some different things. So we're going to tend to a tour, over hit, which for that, on the great race. Um, with kind of some things reopening again, um, we started looking at that again through YF Tours. Um, notice some incredible price increases as well, mostly because of trip insurance and a number of different things, just costs of everything seem to go up. Um, in working with one of the new peers at the high school, Hunter Brazina, who unfortunately is not able to be here tonight, um, just had a medical procedure and was disabled, may be here tonight. Um, Hunter, in fact, is a former student, um, who had gone on many of the trips to Mississauga, um, beforehand. He, um, more, quite personally, actually, um, had been living and working in Sweden, um, at some museums and a number of different places and things. Um, has gotten, had gotten certified, um, to give tours as well, had done that when he was in Europe. Um, because of some COVID protocol in Sweden, was basically given three days to get over Valish, essentially, and then he ended up at, at his St. Chris Central. So, um, he started at high school here this fall. Him and I kind of connected and through a number of different conversations, started working again with a tour company. Um, initially, the long story short is we were finding not only a pretty long trip that this company had been, um, really trying to promote to us. And I'm talking long trip, meaning like fifteen, sixteen days for, for just a long time, you know, half a month, students in Europe, it's a long time. Um, especially as our first, I guess, run here with us, uh, and the cost was, like, shocking to us, um, upwards of fifty-five hundred dollars. Which for a parent to, to look at that and just in terms of budgets and things, we just thought was not, not realistic. So, um, I started talking with Hunter, um, about his experiences and his, I guess, certifications. I know I'm not using the correct term there. Um, but just with his resources and things, um, come to find out that he is qualified, again, through whatever certificate it is here, um, to be able to lead tours, as a matter of fact. Um, so he started doing some time with the companies that he's familiar with and works with and is just aligned with. Um, and we have come up with a, um, a trip to Paris, France. Where he would, um, fly into Paris and do day trips to the UK, to Amsterdam, to Frankfurt, some beaches in Marseille, and then go back and forth. Um, through these day trips, essentially, I said, a couple of hours to go to each of these different places. I did bring some handouts, as a matter of fact. I don't know if I should start, like, tell me to come around, is that okay to hand out or to take one on my has to own?
Yep.
So you can, it's fine. It's, it, okay, just to be able to see.
Here.
So, um, we're looking at, um, a twenty twenty-three tour itinerary, which in talking with not only a few students, and I'll get to a couple of the things that we've been already putting into motion, um, at high school level at least. Um, why not twenty twenty-two? Why not let's get this one and, you know, excited and different things, um, sooner than later. We're trying to be mindful of the abandoned choir trips, which apparently on even years, um, have trips planned, have a significant trip planned. So we're trying to be mindful of financial costs for parents, um, and experiences for kids as well with this, which is why then we booked it up to twenty twenty-three. We're hoping that COVID, just in general, will slow down a little bit or calm down, I guess. Um, and then finally, the financial aspect as well, to give parents more time and opportunity to plan financially and things. Despite the fact that YF Tours started on some of their, I don't want to say bidding, but their packages that they had put together were upwards of fifty-five hundred dollars. We, um, Hunter and Hunter's the guy who runs the numbers and, like I said, with the companies that he works with, um, were able to get it to thirty-four hundred, about thirty-four hundred dollars. Um, which at an eighteen-month payment plan, there is a little bit of wiggle room in this, would be about a hundred and ninety, or one hundred and ninety-five dollars per month. Um, that parents would be able to manage in budget, um, at a pretty low rate. The cost includes flights, hotel, different rail passes, um, and Hunter can, he could speak to this, I have been out some things from him. But, um, in order to not only navigate around with how to do some of the tours in each of these towns as well, um, through train tickets, that's included in the cost. There's also a London City Pass, Amsterdam City Pass, Versailles Tickets, Angel Tower Tickets as well. Um, breakfast is included every day at a hotel and it's just responsible for, probably just a long, shit-suffer situation, but everything else would be, um, included. Um, so we're looking at the ninth through the eighteenth. Um, we're also very excited because we will be in Paris for a still day. And if, all I had to do to find out what Hunter had said, he knows this just from his own experiences up in Europe, and if he said, quote, we think the United States does Independence Day big, go to Paris. And Google this, see the fireworks in Angel Tower, and it was like, I was also. So, um, I just got so, so excited for the opportunity for students to, that's, um, with that. So, um, what I handed out to you guys was a map, um, just to give you an idea of like physically what this looks like, and in the back was some places of interest that we've talked about. Um, probably going, as a matter of fact, not that we're going to be hitting all of these, but this, the, as many as we can. Um, for instance, lucky, or in London, the Buckingham Palace, hoping to see changing of guards, um, really wanting to check out the Anne Frank House in the Netherlands. Um, yeah, Frankfurt Zoo, just some of the same dogs and some different things there as well. Um, but I was really excited about the cost opportunity with that as well. Um, it does include trip insurance and things as well, so it would be where, you know, families are locked in the pain and then all of a sudden. Oh, things still aren't going great, and oh, by the way, sorry, I need to think, we needed, we might hear that we needed that as part of the, um, package as well. We had a couple student meetings in the high school, just purely interest. I'd be very interested in learning more about what this might look like, what's happening. Um, we had about thirty kids show up so far. Um, we're looking at opening it up to, and we talked with a couple of the middle school, eighth grade team, middle school teachers as well. It'd be open to this year's current eighth graders, all the way through this year's current junior class. So the junior class graduates in twenty twenty-three in May, that July, they would still be eligible, um, to go with us as well. So, um, there's, there's a handful of things up in here, for instance, numbers of chaperones, yeah. The tour companies recommended one for six kids because we want to keep our student and adult chaperone, I guess, ratio, um, workable, especially for some of the tours. For instance, the Anne Frank House are only admitted as certain like small, small groups in at a time, just because of the size of the, um, the building and things as well. So that is pretty number dependent, where you don't have all the details right now, so we need to see and we'll push up this to show, you know, what kind of interest we'd be getting. Um, we are looking at, um, having a parent meeting on December first. I looked and saw there's, I think this is a task force meeting or something, I believe at seven o'clock. Anything at the high school that night? Um, so we're looking at six o'clock, um, for the, just checking up, uh, open the district schedule and things. Um, just to start really trying to solidify, um, interest in things with that. It's just, you know, also we need to step out to some of these shops. So, so, and that's right now kind of what we are thinking. So, um, I don't know if you guys have any questions or?
I've, I've been, I've taken a lot of teams all over, all over, um, Europe and then also like, like Africa and things. The, the amount of stuff that they learn on those trips is, is huge. You can't teach. I've been to a lot of these, like the Anne Frank House is unbelievable. And, uh, so when you can bring them there, it looks amazing. And I've been in Europe and seen the big classes. And I've been in Europe and seen the big classes walking through and it, it's amazing, but also it looks terrifying. I brought eighteen people to Kenya and it, it's, it's hard, it's, you know, it's hard, but but so worth it.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, just looking at some of the experience we started, when Hunter, I sort of breaking out some of the top spots. Um where not only is it just, just really, really an incredible neat experience, um but also the history connections and some different things would be just incredible opportunities. So we're really excited about it and hoping things can settle down enough that things go without a catch. So.
What are you asking for from the board or administration? Or any asks, or this is just more of a FYI?
This is a FYI, school-related opportunity for kids come up. So that's it. There's no financial anything at all. It's just, this is what we're hoping to be able to provide for kids.
So is it school-related at all, really? I mean, as far as how would the school be involved at all? You know, is there a? No, it's like, I don't know, I don't know what I'm asking.
Aside from potentially any history connection types of things, um that's where the closer, yes, and when we really hammer down. You know, you can, the best plan, you have to just go in and see kind of thing is it gets closer. Because I know some of these things are currently closed or supposed to open up in the summer of twenty twenty-two and some different things. But I definitely want to connect a little bit more with history teachers to see what type of potential connections, you know, if it's close to something, and there's something they cover in history class, I think it'd be an awesome opportunity to, to tack it on the cheek.
Might be a lot of similarities between the DC trip, like I don't know, talk to Mr. Fritchy or Mr. Hook to get their, you know, advice on trip planning and what, you know, chaperones and I'm sure there's tips and tricks just about generally, you know, they take a hundred and thirty kids. Um but that might be something to, to look at as well.
Sure.
You know, I mean, because I think they do, you know, the payment plan and all that, how to run that. And then the kind of the behavior, I think there's a behavioral piece too, but that is, that's school-related. So I don't know if you want to work in incentives with behavior or sent, I don't know. And it's, it's been a long time, right, since Mrs. Lucky took a European.
Yeah, it's, yeah, because it was.
It's before I, I mean, it's got to be nine, ten years.
At least six, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I will. Perfect.
Yeah, I think one of the last trips was in Rome, shopping with her in case giving break.
Mm-hmm.
Um for that as well, so, yeah, it had been a while.
Oh, yeah, those are all cool.
So, thank you. All right, thank you for your time. Well, thank you.
Uh next comments by board members and superintendent. Um next is general pacing questions. Um I, I, I want just like to get back on the agenda at some point here, is just going to kind of talk through just some gym usage or space and prioritization. Because I know I brought it up a little over a year ago and then brought it up again in the spring. And we just, like, nothing's moved forward in that space. I'd like to try to move something forward, just because we're looking through it as examples. On Mondays, the elementary school large gym is booked by community ad. On Thursdays, it's booked by community ad. Um St. Christ Select now has Sundays, Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays, and the big gym in the middle school. Um so when people are trying to schedule things, it's like impossible. And then those things go from now until the middle of May. So then I know it isn't just basketball, it's going to be rec volleyball, it's going to be trying to schedule over the top of select volleyball and kind of all this stuff is just compounding and I don't, I think it would be good to kind of have some type of question of prioritization of like how we do that. So. So for board to gym, well, board, or we were going to do it, we were going to do it. Last year, we talked about it twice and nothing. And right now, and again, I've like I canceled practice, the last practice, because I was here, because I couldn't move to any open nights. Um so I just think, I just think we, like, because I hear that from a lot of people trying to schedule, right? That it just feels like there's an opportunity there, because we have more gyms than anybody. Um and I'm not saying that we're, we're going to have all the answers, but maybe just get the interested parties in that conversation. I think, I don't know if it has to be board, but I think it would be good to have some type of committee to have the conversation at least. Because I don't know if I should be on it. I was, I volunteered to be on it last year, so I don't know if I should be the one on it now with my position.
Yeah, you, you know it probably best, right? Problems that need to be solved.
Opportunities.
Yeah.
Yeah, however we decide to do it, and maybe we decide to do nothing. Um and I can be okay too, right? Um we just like, something has to, it just feels like we're at the point where something has to go somewhere. It just, it feels like it's breaking.
And your question probably won't be about usage, because I think our gyms are, are used frequently and often. They don't sit empty. The next question is more about prioritization and who gets on the list and how.
And how much, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think this has come up in the past before as well. And I, you know, I don't know if we're talking, I didn't catch part of that. I kind of came across garbled. But in the past, we've always said that the district itself would take priority on this, on the space. Um I don't know if you're looking at prioritizing district groups versus non-district groups, or if you're looking at prioritizing the groups within the district, or the groups that are, are not specific SEC district. Does CBA take precedence over unicycling, or does unicycling take precedence over paying? You know, I, I don't know what you're looking at for prioritizing them.
All of the both, yes, yeah, yes. I mean, I, I think right now the priority is first come, first served, other than a school function, specific school function. Right? So if it's uh varsity basketball gets, right, so they can, I, you can look out at the schedule, varsity basketball takes middle school, right? And they get to boost the middle school program if they have, or the CBA or whatever, because that school program takes precedence over the middle school. Middle school takes precedence over the other youth things. And I mean, you can see that. It just, every, once you get past that, that's when it kind of, I don't, this kind of first one on the calendar wins. It feels like, and I don't know if that's why you want to do it, when some groups can book nine months out or ten months out and others can't and aren't able to do that, so.
Yeah, I guess, you know, when we talk about board stuff, this to me um personally does not feel like a board level sort of responsibility or decision.
Agreed. Yeah, I think the athletic directors and the scheduler, Wendy, and I don't know, start there. Because if you, you get everybody that's currently reserving it, I think it's just, it's too muddy, too many people. Right? I think it needs to be at school, should be setting that with, I mean, input obviously from the others, but I agree, there's to be a priority list somehow, instead of just kind of first come, first served. I think, yeah, two athletic directors, um yourself, if you want, you know, um, I don't know. I did, you know, you, you, you seem to be, you know, you're most intimate with opportunities or whatever, so.
Yeah, I mean, I've talked to lots of schools trying to figure out what they do, right? And then they do different things where they cut the youth programs, right? Because they don't have gym, we have more gyms than they do. Um so I mean, I'm not saying like that isn't the right thing to do either, but I mean, that's.
I mean, yeah, for the most part, I would say, right, we're serving all of our students, but they're not necessarily school-related uh groups first. Community ad, but I guess, you know, maybe not all the pets, but I think it's worthwhile. It's, I agree with David, it's obviously a board level, um but it's, there's certainly an administrative thing that needs to be.
And. Yeah, yeah, I was just saying, like, I brought it up September of twenty, right? And then we talked about it in April of, right, this year, and so I'm just bringing it up again, that's all. So. Okay. Uh next registration for the twenty-one W A S.
I just wanted to, the passing of one of our former teachers, Art Brusawitz. I just want to send our thoughts to his family and everybody. And I had a poor teacher, he's great, and he left an impact with a whole lot of people that still live around here. So it was just sad to hear about that.
We're, we're sending flowers. Um the district always does that to any current, former staff, family. Um so, yeah, on behalf of the district, flowers being sent to the services.
Good. Uh next registration for the twenty-one W S A D State Education Convention.
Um hotels are reserved. Um again, Kelly has hotels for Erica, Brian, Josh, myself. Um and uh so those can be changed, you know, as we get closer. Uh deadline, there is December sixteenth, early bird, there's a cut on a price break prior to December sixteenth. It's kind of all or nothing. It doesn't matter if you go one, two, or three days. So if you're okay, she'll just uh sign the form herself, the registration committed, okay? Um, oh, yeah, I guess that's it with that. And C ties into that, so of uh three of you that go, one of you has to be a delegate uh at the state uh convention there. That is on Wednesday afternoon. Um so that might, you know, I know you guys were saying, I'm not sure exactly what day you're there, whatever. So it's Wednesday, Wednesday afternoon, and we do, do need to declare, so Kelly would like to know.
We voted on that the last time, correct?
I don't recall. And we talked about it.
I think we did.
That was important, and we voted for Howard. Last year in December, to represent us as the delegate in December. In November last year, Howard was, right?
Well, it was for last year's.
Yeah, but we, I, we voted on that. I'm almost positive that we nominated him to.
Yeah, we vote to, to, to designate somebody.
Yes, but that would need to do.
Today, well. Um.
Let's see, December.
Kelly, do you know it? Can it wait until December? I'm just going to roll that up with this. Because I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. I don't, it, it doesn't have to be, it's not like an official vote. They need us to just say, who's your delegate?
Yeah, I think I can wait until December. They just want to know.
You can wait till December?
Yeah, they just want to know so they can mail some stuff, so that should be fine.
They need to know where to send the resolutions to and all that, so. I would think that'd be.
That's not what we voted on, though.
See, there's also the um, the C sub, no, I think that's, you know, that's a Jeff.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was.
Yeah.
I thought we voted Brian for something because.
That was to run the annual meeting.
No, there, there was something, but.
If it can wait till December, Kelly, um we'll do that.
There's not even time to look at the minutes to see.
So it's a lot, it's Robert's rules or it's kind of like a, a parliamentary procedure type thing. So they'll have a packet of resolutions that the uh W A S B wants to forward to legislation as W A S B. But each of you, each of the school's delegates gets to vote, say, yeah, we'll pass this on, or no. It's not a majority. This is not a good idea to even pass on for suggestion, suggested legislation changes. So as exciting as it sounds, it's a lot of, it's, it's, well, you get the packet ahead of time and explains it, and then they get to talk. Talk about, elaborate, they'll get the floor for so many minutes. And you have rebuttal and it's a different discussion, and then they call for a vote, get a bullet into the resume. I, sometimes it's up to like four pages or forty different, you know, ballparking forty-ish things. And some of them, you kind of shake your head, I'll admit, you're like, what, really, we're considering this? But when he brings it up, it's got to be considered there. So it's about two hours worth.
I'll confirm all of it.
I think I'm there Wednesday. Yeah, I'll go check. Oh, we should. I'm going to give the same screening as you.
It's not like that. I know, I need Eric.
Okay, we'll bring it back then in December.
All right, uh scheduled presentations by guests and staff members.
Done?
In your prompt to? Improv? Okay.
So we're probably bored, maybe.
We could give them some time if you want to do a little jig or something. Yes, wow, nice. Uh next, financial reports.
Okay, the balances as of October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Citizen State Bank checking was sixty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and seven cents. The money market is two million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy cents. Citizen State Money Market Fund forty-six is fifty-three dollars and eight cents. The Citizen State Bank Money Market Suicide Prevention, sixteen thousand, five hundred and four dollars and forty-eight cents. Zero dollars in the local government pool. And the total account balances is two million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-three cents.
Motion to approve the treasurer's report is presented.
Motion by Kurt. Second. Second by Vince, by her. All those in favor?
I.
There's a maybe seconded by a delay electronic delay, maybe. All right, um uh next on the end is the consideration of the consent agenda.
I just want to um state that under item C for John Keeler, uh per the handbook language, liquidated damages in the role of one thousand dollars were assessed and will be taken out of the final paycheck in last day's next Tuesday, November twenty-third.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent to agenda items.
Motion by Vince.
Second.
And Erica. Questions?
Can we read it to the minutes of our part-time and full-time?
Um we have five part-time and two full-time for a total of seven. Motion again was? The motion was Vince. Second was Erica. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? That's motion period.
I am, just in case there's some of that feedback, Kelly.
I just wondered, Kelly, are you picking that up when I beat it?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh next is the administrative reports, student enrollment update.
Uh students in seats in November are down six students, total of one thousand, five hundred and ninety-five. Again, in seats are free and reduced lunch rate is at twenty-one point nine seven percent. Um again, typical range over the last eight years is around eighteen to twenty, so it's up slightly. Um total uh virtual full-time students, those again are resident students, seventy-six, part-time forty-four. And uh bottom right inquiry, see our uh open enrolled virtual students in our charter school uh for the month of November is two hundred and two. And then uh lastly, point out the open enrollment at the bottom. Uh again, we have three hundred and twenty-two open enrolled students in versus one hundred and twenty-six out for difference to the positive of one hundred and ninety-six.
Uh next, the key word for our school board, uh student, staff, and community recognition.
Uh Carson Hinsman, David Olson, Connor Nielsen, Tyler Miller. Congratulations on your outstanding work in the classroom and at the football field. The recognition from the WFCA as academic all-state members is well-deserved. Sidney Burgess and Sally Vagnis, Vagnis. Sidney and Sally, what an outstanding senior season and career. Your selection as honorable mention, members of the all-state team by the Wisconsin Golf Coaches Association of Wisconsin, is yet another feather in your cap. Congratulations, and thank you for representing your team, school, and community so well. Roberts, Warren Fire Department, and Glenn Hall. Thank you for your support of our girls' golf team by participating in our send-off and sending a truck as an escort. The team coached the families, thought it was an amazing experience. Uh United Fire and Rescue, Kurt Sullivan, thank you, Kurt, and all the members of the United Fire and Rescue. Thank you for your support of our student athletes. Every athlete and team that has been able to experience the fire truck escort is so thrilled at the experience. We as a school are appreciative of your support. Thanks. Chad Con, uh, Conz?
Concela.
Concela, Dan Rude, Steve Thompson. Dan, Chad, Steve, your IT support was unmatched this week. The support you have given the middle school and the parents is greatly appreciated. Caitlin Carlson, congratulations on your qualification. Caitlin Carlson, congratulations on your qualification and performance at the state cross-country meet. You should be very proud of your effort and your accomplishments this season.
Nice. Good work, my al. Uh, next is discussion on future district needs and priorities. Uh, so we have a task force meeting this Wednesday, um, at the high school in the lecture hall at seven o'clock. Anything other will be sending our, well, Tim will be sending the agenda out prior. Um, just to give this on the record though, that there was some discussion in the last meeting. The board actually received that agenda in the same email that others receive it, right? So I, I get it from Tim. So there's a discussion in the meeting. People thought that we, like, it was a school board directed and it's like, no, like, Tim literally sends it to us at the same time. We get the same email. Um, that everybody does in that one. So I'll just want to clear that up. Um, as well, because uh, the outside firm mentioned it, but it's like, like, I don't, I don't receive anything prior. So. Okay, let me get that on the record.
Um, yeah, then, uh, the facilitators, you know, Ben Berry and us, the team, Mark Johnson, old architects and engineers. Um, thought it'd be a good idea to have a meeting without the administration present. Because sometimes they feel that, you know, they sometimes can steer it too much or the perception that they can or that, that then the community task force and the board can have unfettered conversations. So they, they asked that we not be at that, uh, this next meeting on Wednesday. Um, it's just trying to kind of wrap up things and finish. None of those, no, no, the board, the board, yes. Administrators, no. Okay, asked. So FYI, that's why you won't um, see us there. And then, uh, the, uh, Morris Leatherman survey continues. It started a week ago Thursday. They figured about three weeks. Um, he knows he has to have it all ready and ready to present, uh, the December first task force meeting, which will be the next one, two weeks from this Wednesday. Um, and then, uh, see David's not on. I had to reconnect. Um, and then, uh, you know, if you, as a board, you know, uh, if you're able to be at that meeting, great, you're going to hear that, but you're going to also hear it again on the fifteenth. He will present that, uh, um, summary of the survey results. At our board meeting in December, along with community task force will present their formal recommendation and writing as well. Um, one thing I want to throw in, I threw out wage and benefit too, um, as well as to consider priorities. Um, the opportunity or option to pass a actual resolution, make a recommendation in December, rather than wait till January. If you're like, yeah, this all makes sense. We're ready to make a decision now to, to pass that, uh, a, a, a resolution. Um, that would give you, you know, an extra month of communication and marketing if you move forward. Versus, you know, you have to have it seventy days prior, which pushes us at the end of January. You, you certainly, uh, can and say, yeah, January is still enough time, uh, to pass a resolution. Um, but that's, I just want to throw that out there. If we're ready to go and, and if you've been a part of the task force the whole way, you know, perhaps you can, uh, pass a resolution in, in December. Now, with that said, you know, there's legal work and, uh, I mean, it's Thomas, Tom Briggs does the actual legal language and, and, and resolution. Um, we have, we need to work out a timeline with, yep, we passed this, but we need to come back at a special meeting. And a week or whatever and, and, and prove it. You could even do it virtually, but I just threw that out there, like more time, right? One of the criticisms we heard last time was that it's out rushed. We didn't get enough information. So just wanted to throw that out there as something to consider and so, you know, we can shape that agenda in December. Any preliminary thoughts of that? If there are no timeline and legal reasons that, you know, get that resolution done, would we want to do it December?
Tom had reached out to me a couple of weeks ago and just says, we have to do it by January twenty-fourth. So just to kind of as a reminder, that's dropped in gate, but we can do it prior to that.
She said they give their recommendation. They give their recommendation in writing? Breaks it up.
That's a good question. I guess that would be discussed on December first.
Are they voting on somebody to?
I would, I would think so, yeah. Cause that was their charge presented and said presented writing to the school board. Okay. Yeah. Who or how that is done. Is it to be decided?
Maybe they should do that at one of their next meetings is side of that. Pick them like designate. Well, start designating some people that are going to be writing stuff up and making the recommendation. Cause it's, send it in writing is one thing, but maybe they'll come present it in person too.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Certainly. Oh, yeah, I'll, uh, ask Ben that to once he's agenda.
Yeah.
And that would have to be added to the next agenda.
It's already on the preliminary, preliminary, yeah.
Yep.
The task force piece and the survey piece, not necessarily the consideration of the, um, resolutions. So the resolution again is, um, if we decide two questions, it's going to be the exact word that would go into that one. And again, that's where we use a legal firm to help us with that.
Also, some ads I have, um, when do you have to have your name in the school board, to the school board?
Yep, so, uh, incumbents is December, December twenty-fourth. And then, um, what's it called challenger, challengers? What's the, it's like first of the year, right? New folks is January, uh, Kelly, January fourth, sixth, something like that.
January fourth.
Fourth. And, uh, maybe you wanted to speak to that, Kelly, a little bit. I know we discussed it earlier this week and I know it's your first time, so I'm putting you on the spot. But, um, there's a procedure, right? We have to put the notice in the newspaper, uh, soon here, et cetera.
Yeah, so the notice is going to be in the newspaper this Thursday. And then, yeah. Um, the incumbents has to be by the December twenty-fourth and then, um, new people wanting to run for the board is January four.
Thank you.
Isn't the first date just, your first one is if you're not going to run, right? That's actually what you're filing. A non-candidacy.
If you do run, then it's January four.
Yeah, I think that's how that looks.
All right. Guess that's true. It's a feature meeting. A priority. We have seven members.
At least five apparently.
I'll move twice.
Five point.
Really?
Uh, so next on the agenda is a consideration recommended adult price, meal prices starting December first, twenty twenty-one for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
So we received notification, um, the DPI school nutrition. People that we, because we're operating under the seamless summer option again this year, there is a little bit different requirements for what we charge for other meals. Um, meaning mostly adult meals that are being paid for by our staff. And, and some parents when they come into our buildings and stuff. So we have to make sure that what they're paying equals at least what we would be receiving if it were paid through the federal government. So that's the letter that was included in your package, um, from DPI. And so we are required by December first to raise our adult breakfast and lunch prices. So currently they are a dollar eighty-five for breakfast. And we will be required to increase that to two dollars and fifty-six cents, which is a seventy-one cent increase. And our adult visitor lunch prices will go from three dollars and seventy cents to four dollars and sixty-five cents. Which is a ninety-five cent increase. So as a part of this, I will be sending out an email tomorrow, letting all staff know that this change is effective December first. And that is the latest that we could implement this change. So that's quite a large increase for for all staff for these meals, but.
So there is a choice. Our choice is increase adult prices or start charging. Get out of the summer, seamless summer. Is there even a choice?
There really isn't a choice. Yeah, we, basically we have to increase the meal prices. Hopefully next year we'll be back on the regular national school lunch program and the breakfast program. And those reimbursement prices are a little bit lower, so we might be able to reduce that cost back down again. But as for right now, operating under the seamless summer program, this is what we need to be set up. So I just need a motion and a second.
Motion to increase the breakfast and lunch prices to the levels that were included in our.
Motion by Kurt.
Second, we have no other choice.
I can say, man, these decisions. I, that was going to be my big question is, I mean, what if, if we don't have a motion, it still happens, correct? We have to do it.
We have to do it.
Yeah. Yeah. So, okay. All those in favor? I, I, opposed. David, did you, did you have something? I saw you came off mute.
Uh, I did, I, did that come off mute in time or no?
No.
Oh, I said, I.
Okay, all right. Motion carried. Next, fourteen on the agenda, other. And then reminders on the important upcoming dates. We have the SCC, this, uh, the task force meeting this Wednesday. Next task force meeting on the first, the next school board meeting is December fifteenth. That is a Wednesday. Um, so that's when we're moving to our Wednesday meetings once a month. Uh, starting next, starting next month. And then the January nineteenth through twenty-first is a W S A D state convention. With that, um, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Motion by David. Second, second by Kurt. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Right, meaning adjourned.
Have a good evening, everyone.
You too. So.